Hey, good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to today's special meeting and subsequently Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee for the Whole on October 16th. We'll start with a special meeting agenda. We have a quorum. And I would just ask the record reflect, we have council members Foley, Arenas, Davis, Vice Mayor Jones, Councilmember Camus, Councilmember Peralos, and this is Sparza and myself. Okay, so we'll start then on item one, which is ratification, termination, and proclamation of local emergency due to predicted high fire risk conditions and expected public safety power shut-off. We have a presentation.
Yes, we have a presentation. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, and both attending today in the chambers. My name is Ray Reardon. I'm the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Beside me here is Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager, and Lee Wilcox, CMO, Chief of Staff. The two were the EOC Directors during this time in the PSP activation of our Emergency Operations Center. We're here today to describe the city's actions in preparing for and responding to this recent PG&E public safety shut-off incident that started on October 9th and ran through October 12th. The picture in this slide is an actual representation of the power outage as it was taking place. It's a picture that was taken in Hilo 3 or Air 3 during the incident. Just a little background to make sure everyone's on the same page of understanding of how we got to where we're at with the emergency and the actions we took during the emergency. On May 30, the California Public Utilities Commission, or CPUC, granted Pacific Gas and Electric the authority to conduct public safety power shut-offs. Shortly thereafter, PG&E began an education campaign for local government and other agencies as to the purpose of these public safety shut-offs, as well as the conditions that would present the situation where they may call for this. That included the dry vegetation in the area, low humidity typically below 20%, and forecasted winds above 25 miles an hour with gusts exceeding 45. Those were the criteria they were going to use to make decisions on the shut-offs. A public safety power shut-off could affect portions of either a distribution system in our city and/or transmission. In this case, it was distribution lines. In the picture on the top, the yellow area represents the predicted area of impact with the shut-offs in a distribution area, and the reddish is a higher fire danger area just outside the city. The city took immediate actions once we were notified of this decision to allow PG&E to make these shut-offs in action. We initiated leadership meetings within the city. Key department heads were called together to start strategizing on the issues we could face during a power shut-off. We also met with PG&E in multiple settings, whether it was by ourselves or with other groups and agencies, and made sure that we had an individualized workshop with PG&E. During this time, we evaluated city power needs of critical facilities, our emergency generator capacity, the fueling complexity we'd run into, and the limited resources we may find, and resources that we need to pull together to support the public at our own community resource centers. After evaluating these conditions, we immediately called the departments together and put together the power vulnerability plan, on which we also conducted a tabletop exercise. The city committed its resources seriously to this threat and created in six weeks a plan that was very effective, that a typical plan would take up to six months to create. So many resources were taken offline to work and focus on this power shut-off plan. The conditions that we faced, the power shut-off conditions that presented themselves. As we look at how it progressed, it first started with the National Weather Service issuing a red flag warning on Friday, October 4th, at 4:30 in the morning. On October 7th, with continuing evaluation, PG&E issued a press release to inform the public that it was considering the power shut-off to 31 counties in the state, including Santa Clara County. And that was a result of the forecasted high fire conditions that included the red flag. By noon on October 7th, PG&E confirmed with the local government agencies that a power shut-off would commence and will impact the city of San Jose. The power shut-off would be executed about 12:00 midnight the morning of Wednesday, October 9th, and continue through 9:00 on Thursday, October 10th. They also informed us at that time and in some of the education that the power outage could extend as long as five days past the weather event. That would be a total of seven days before, right? And then, once an all-clear was given after the weather cleared on the second day, then they could begin the inspections. And that five days is what they would need for the inspections. So in looking at the factors that we were facing, PG&E considered the red flag warning declared by the National Weather Service, the low humidity levels. While the humidity was initially around 36 in the weather forecast by Santa Clara County, it quickly dropped the next day into the teens. Forecasted sustained winds generally above 25 miles an hour, and you'll see that the winds were expected to be up around 45 to 50 miles an hour. And the condition of dry fuel did exist. The one additional item PG&E identified was that they had real-time observations from staff in the field and collecting the data they had in their wildfire safety operations On Wednesday, October 9th, at 7:00, the city activated the Emergency Operations Center in anticipation of the high wildfire and PS conditions lasting up to the seven days, which are the two days of the event and the five days inspections afterwards. The EOC was staffed in with 35 personnel who were identified in the city's emergency operations plan and the power vulnerability plan. In addition, the fire department stood up an increased staffing to address concerns of the high fire danger during patrols in the area and establishing a department operations center. Given the confirmation of the threatening weather by the National Weather Service, the information that was shared on three different conference call briefings, and the incoming weather, the EOC Director, here Kip Harkness, signed a local proclamation of emergency at 2:00. This allowed us to position city resources to face this imminent threat to the city and as allowed by the city ordinance.
Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager. I want to take a few moments. We will have a formal after-action report, but I just want to take a few moments to walk through our process and some of the highlights of the process, and then we'll turn it back over to you for any questions you might have. So the, as Ray mentioned, we were able to respond because of the amount of planning done. And I have props here to give you a sense of kind of the amount of documents we went through, and then we're able to convince those into a more actionable plan that broke down everything that we needed to do in the EOC day by day and the key events leading up. The outage itself had an impact across the city, of course, mostly along the East Foothills and Almedin Valley, but hitting council districts 2, 4, 5, 8, 9, and 10, and impacted a number of schools, healthcare facilities, traffic lights, arterial routes, community centers, lift pump stations, and fire stations. We were able to use our GIS capability to understand these impacts. In fact, our GIS capability gave us a bit more granular insight into that than PG&E provided to us. To give you a sense of the discrepancy, the original general frame that PG&E provided suggested as many as 67 schools were impacted. When we did a refined analysis, we found out it was 39. That level of discrepancy makes it really hard to respond, because there's a vast difference between trying to support a 67-school event versus a 39-school event. But in any case, we were able to mitigate any of the problems because we knew these critical facilities and had prepared and implemented our fueling plans. So for example, some of the water kept flowing, the fire stations kept working, all of those functionalities proceeded. As you know, you've probably seen this map, this is sort of where it ended up being. PG&E talks in terms of customer counts. As we know, that's not a particularly useful baseline, because a customer account can be my house with four or five people in it, or it can be an entire apartment building with hundreds of people in it. So we were able to get a more accurate read on that using, again, our GIS capability. A key vulnerable population that we're looking at is those people who are medical baseline customers, those people who are using power for things that are powering medical devices and are at risk when that shut-off goes out. There was a lot of back and forth between us and PG&E to understand how many medical baseline customers were affected. And again, our enhanced GIS capabilities allowed us to have a better view on that than originally PG&E had provided. So as many as 900 people ended up being affected by the power outage. Fortunately, it was relatively brief, and then, once the weather had died down on Thursday and we got the all-clear from PG&E, they began re-inspecting for the urban areas. The power was fairly rapidly restored. By Friday, we were down to 200 accounts, and by Saturday, we had a complete restoration. Some quick highlights and accomplishments from the activation. Public information mobilized as quickly as Monday and was in full operation. We estimate that there were about 110,000 people who actually looked at our viewer, used our GIS viewer. There's some $2.2 million, excuse me, 2.2 million social media impressions, and as many as 145 million people were exposed to news coming out of San Jose on this. If you were to equate that into media buys, if we have to buy that media coverage, about $2.5 million worth of media coverage. We launched effective liaison activity, liaising with many of the council members, the school districts, and proactively reaching out to those medical baseline customers by creating a calling bank. We also established a solid ground game, going out and checking on the medical facilities and making sure that they were in contact with our fire and medical personnel. And we were able to keep those critical infrastructures from pumps to fire stations going and fueled throughout. We also coordinated with our various telecommunication partners to ensure continuation of cell service, and as I mentioned before, had enhanced GIS and data capability for improved situational awareness. We also, because we're innovative, managed to deploy and test a mobile app in the middle of all that, that allowed people to self-report whether there were outages in the area. That became very, very critical to ground-truthing where the outages were. In a couple of cases, we found out that the maps that we had been given were inaccurate, and we were able to expand the area where the outages were, and again, reach out to more medical baseline coverage people when we realized they were in an area that actually had an outage. So that real-time ground-truthing of the blackout data by deployment of a mobile app was extremely useful. We had the three operational periods that Ray mentioned in the EOC, more than 150 people, over 3,000 hours. The expenses, just in terms of employee time, were at least $0.5 million, not counting fuel and equipment costs. We're still calculating the full cost of all of that. So bottom line, we were able to deploy as per plan and avoid any of the major implications of that shut-out, partly because it wasn't too long and partly because we were extremely well-prepared. And with that, we have our recommendations to both ratify and terminate the proclamation and also to receive this update, which we have just presented. With that, I'll stop, and on behalf of the team here, take any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. And thanks to each one of you, Kip, and Ray, and Lee, and everyone who worked so hard over that period of time. I know we had 150 employees who were working around the clock, and you guys were right there in the EOC. And I was just very impressed with everything I saw. If I could just offer for a moment my observations, just how, first, we were getting real-time information before we were getting it from PG&E. We were getting more accurate information. Matt and the team over at Public Works created a great data platform, a map-based data platform that we utilized to be able to identify where the medically vulnerable residents were, to identify where the actual blackouts were happening versus the projected blackouts. And it was clear that we had much better information than other publication agencies or than the PG&E did. And I actually conveyed, when I talked to the PG&E CEO last Thursday, I said, hey, you guys should probably scale some of the software we got, because you guys need it. In addition to that, I think they developed an app, I think many of you saw, that provided crowdsourcing, using crowdsourcing, provided real-time information about which residents were actually getting shut down, so we could really understand what was happening on the ground without having to deploy a city staff person to every block in the city. So really impressive, the amount of work that's happened since May to prepare ourselves for this. And I think that's certainly a credit to the team in Public Works, and Matt, and Ray, and everybody's been working so hard on this. I was also very impressed by the PIO's team. They did a great job filling the void of information. It was clear that we were out there. When a lot of other folks were speculating about what was happening in their communities, we were very clear and out there in front. And in getting those three community resource centers standing up quickly, which I thought was very quick work. I appreciate all the work of the council offices, Paul Peron and our team to try to get out there and hustle. I think we reached about 10,000 residents we thought were in the most vulnerable communities to ensure they were well-informed, and relied heavily on council offices, and we appreciate your collaboration on that effort. So thank you, everyone, for working together. There is, as Kip mentioned, an after-action report that's due to us, so we will have a fuller discussion then, we certainly can. But if there are any immediate questions or concerns about this action we're about to take, let's hear those now. Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, I also want to thank staff as well. Again, my district was actually affected by this. However, I do have some questions. I really commend the staff for doing a great job. I was well-informed up until they actually turned off the power, and quite frankly, there was no information before they turned off the power. We were told it was going to be turned off at midnight, and then they actually turned it off maybe somewhere during the night. I don't know, I was asleep. But I didn't get, my phone didn't ring until in the morning. So I would have to say, maybe we were being very well-informed until they actually did turn it off, and then we weren't being very well-informed. And so my thoughts... Maybe PG&E wants me not to talk.
They have their ways.
I have to tell you this. You were talking about 45 mile an hour winds in my district. You couldn't blow out a birthday candle with the winds that we were having there. So a lot of people did not understand why the heck their power turned off to begin with. And it was actually off in a way that was unexpected, like three, like on three sides there would be power, and on one side, there wouldn't be power. Is there any way to get a little more understanding of how the power would shut off? And quite frankly, how do I answer the wind question? There really was, I was there, there wasn't any wind.
Well, the fire conditions, that's a good question, by the way. The wind conditions, they take at the mountain peaks, both on the east side with the Diablo Range and on the west side with the Santa Cruz Mountain Range. So the gusts are happening at that level. They may not always come down to the street level, because that's where the fire danger is, it would come down. So that's why they have to shut off the power in those areas. And when they do, the grids are not, the grids that they have, this is not in defense of PG&E, but it's the way it's designed, they're not squares to know that exactly this area's coming out. As the city developed, or as the area's developed, they put power in those sections, so it's not always an easy even grade. It'll be pots here and other places out, not just one set block.
And just on that point, I'll be releasing a memo tomorrow that I'll ask in the after-action report, that we get the data from PG&E about what the wind speeds really were when these decisions were happening. I mean, I know, I was sitting in the EOC when we were watching it happen, and around 11:30, 11:45. And I agree, there were certainly readings we were getting that were puzzling to me as well. But if we're not on the mountaintop, we don't know, and I guess we're going to see if we can find out.
Okay. Those are my questions. Again, I think, I have to commend the city's staff was fantastic every step of the way. But the one critique that I had, I was actually getting notified from Santa Clara County, from PG&E, and from staff, which is okay, I guess, but we're just pounded with information. But nobody actually contacted me when the power actually was shut off. So that is the, there wasn't anything from PG&E, there wasn't anything from the county, and there wasn't anything from staff. That being said, you know, I think we are a lot better prepared. I'm going to be putting out a newsletter saying, you know, this wasn't a tragedy this time, but we're much better prepared for a real earthquake or a real scenario. I can tell you that my district, even in my house, we have a lot more flashlights and water storage containers and all the great things that we have, we purchased for this occasion. But again, I want to thank staff. Should I make a motion to open and close, or how does that work?
Staff recommended.
I'll accept to make the resolution.
Okay, that's the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? There is a second. Councilmember Sparza.
I just wanted to echo everybody's thanks. The city team did an amazing job mobilizing very quickly and wanted to echo the mayor's comments. The city's mapping was better than PG&E's, and after a few days, you know, when PG&E didn't do it, the city stepped up and did it. And PG&E was referring people to the city's maps. That was just outstanding, and I wanted to really extend my thanks, even though my district wasn't affected, there were some adjacent areas that were affected. And the city did an amazing job really mobilizing different, multilingual staff to go out and get the message out quickly in different languages, both on video and in writing. And so really, just thank you for that. And I'll save my questions about the cost of this and the PG&E wins for the after-action report, but really, just an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crasco.
And I'm just going to echo the sentiment that's been expressed. I was one of the, of course, one of the districts that was impacted, or we thought we were really going to be impacted. Good news, we weren't as impacted as we originally thought. But when we saw that map, it was frightening, because that red covered a huge part of my district. The one thing I will say, that when we got news of it, I felt a real need because of, just because of the need of my district, which has a high population of multilingual Spanish, multilingual Vietnamese, and everything in between and outside of that, that I needed to deploy my team very quickly and not wait for PG&E's announcements to come out. And as a result, what ended up happening is that the feedback I got from the residents is that they were actually looking at my social media for updates, more so than PG&E, which I think is a good thing, good and bad, right? Because we bear the responsibility to put very accurate information out there, and if we don't have it readily available, then it does us no good. But we got that information, that we were the first to put it out there for them, and they were really using us as an outlet of news. So I think that what that means also is that our residents really trust us, and if we can build that relationship, then use us as best as you can. And so I really appreciate also the conference calls that we had ongoing, that you were able to constantly update us, letting us know what was happening. I really felt like we were working as one. I didn't know everything that was going on, I didn't know all the behind-the-scenes, and I didn't need to. You know, I'm not always the detailed person, I don't want to be bogged down with all the details. Just give me everything that I need to know, and let me run with it. And you did that, and I appreciated that the meetings were, the conference calls were very short, very concise. Here you go, Magdalena, boom! And I could hang up and feel like I had enough information to get back to my residents and get back to my staff with that. So I'm grateful to the universe and to the gods that this wasn't a true emergency, it was a very expensive drill. And I have a lot of flashlights as well. I realized I had none. And when I went to Big Five, everybody was in a panic. It's unfortunate, and they were all doing the same thing that I was doing. But now people are prepared. But I have to tell you, this cost me anywhere between $300 and $400 to just prepare for this. And then, at the end of the day, I didn't lose power. I was part of that, I was smack in the middle of that red map, and then my kids were very disappointed that we didn't lose power. So I just turned off the lights for them, you know, turned off the lights. And so, but we didn't lose any power, and the dogs were fine, and you know. But so I just want to thank you, thank you for the ongoing information. Thank you for making me feel that I was part of your team and that you kept the info really flowing in my direction. I know that I pushed back a little bit with you guys on a couple of calls, because I was feeling also, you know, the stress, and that's what happens when you're under that kind of, that kind of intensity. You really kept your cool about you and said, "No, Magdalena." I'll remember that. But I think that you really needed to do that, and so I appreciate that. I just feel, I feel a lot better in the event that something happens. I know that there's still more work to be done, but I'm not mad at you, I'm mad at PG&E for some of the things that didn't go as I would have liked to have happened. So more on that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank staff for being so diligent with all our resources and being responsive to our requests. I know you have 10 elected officials that are giving you 10 different, possibly 10 different directions, because we all represent different areas and we want resources to our areas. But you, I think you handled it really well. I really liked the placing of the community center, or the resource centers, the community centers that doubled up as the resource centers, and being able to shift that when my neighborhood, between Villages and on the other side of Evergreen College, we also didn't get shut down. So it's really strange now, Magdalena, you didn't get shut down. I didn't either. It is so random, because everybody around me, their lights were off. And so when we saw that, and we thought people would be more prone to go to our community center than Southside, you know, you did that, and I really want to thank you. We had a family fall festival this weekend, and everybody was having a really great time. But there were some folks, community members, who took the time to talk to me about the shutdown, and actually were really impressed and were grateful for our constant communication. I also used our social media to keep our folks connected. And between, I think, what we did as a city and then what the school districts did, I as a parent felt absolutely informed. Your PIOs did a great, just a wonderful job. PRNS, PIO did a wonderful job. They kept us informed whether after-school programs were going to happen or not happen, which is important, because either, you know, your parents are going to leave work and have to go pick up our kids. And so I really want to thank you, that you gave us like hour-per-hour updates, and that meant a lot. So it meant that I could stay at work a little longer, instead of going to pick up my kid from Rock. But I'm sure that he enjoyed that. The one feedback that I do want to give in terms of, I found a little bit troubling, was the traffic control. And off of San Felipe and Yerba Buena, there were, there was, and I think it was predetermined as we were leading up to the shutdown, to close one of the turn lanes. But for the families that live, you know, in my neighborhood and all the way to Villages and Meadowlands, that's the only way we really can get out. And so to have, you know, one of those left-hand turn lanes closed, to me, didn't quite make sense. And I saw that in, over at the Villages the same way, and I think over at another intersection. And so it created a line for us to actually get out, instead of a nice flow. And, you know, I think my community also was in a bit of a crisis and, you know, purchasing all kinds of stuff from our local stores. Save Mart went out of their way and bought 50 pallets of water, and then, you know, to their surprise, the lights turned on the next day, and now they have 50 pallets of water. So now they have a sale of water bottles over at Save Mart, which is great for us, because it just means our lights continue. it just means our lights continue to stay on and our neighborhoods are safer, and everybody feels at peace. This was definitely a great drill for all of us, and I think we scored really high, I think you scored really high. And for people to take time out at a festival to tell me what a great job administration has done, I think that is, just really speaks for itself. So thank you so much for keeping us safe, keeping us organized, and even though this is a shutdown, you didn't, you know, nobody went into crisis mode. Everything was very smooth and very planned, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. I too want to pile on with the gratitude, as tomorrow is the 30th anniversary of the Loma Prieta earthquake, and there was an earthquake yesterday, I don't know how many of you felt it, on the 18th floor, but I did, and I did the little exercise I was supposed to. I am very aware and sensitive to disaster is just around the corner for us. So I felt that the leadership and activation you showed by really implementing an emergency system very quickly and keeping us informed and the public informed, and tweeting to us so that we could then retweet as quickly as possible, was extremely helpful. So I felt the communication was really good, and this was, while may not have been necessary from our perspective and was costly, and we can talk about that later, and I hope we will talk about that in detail, this was a good dry run because we will have a disaster, no one knows when, we don't plan these things. And so, being prepared as we were and knowing some of the areas that we need to correct, like traffic and that and such, will be very helpful for us as a learning experience. But I also want to express my gratitude to the mayor for turning around and coming back from Copenhagen. That really shows true leadership on the part of the city. It shows that our, the head of our city is out and coming back and concerned enough that he's here very publicly making statements and showing the community that you're here and present. So I want to thank you for that. I think that was truly important to us as a city, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you for all the work you've done. I hope we don't have a disaster soon, but I know we're well-prepared for it when it occurs. Thank you.
And thank you for the acknowledgement, Councilmember Foley. I want to thank each of you because I know you were all engaged very deeply on social media and in direct conversation with your own communities, so appreciate all the effort. And thank you to Vice Mayor Jones for jumping in on a couple press events I think we had to ensure that the media is well-informed. Dave?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you all for the support and certainly the feedback. The feedback is really important to us. As was mentioned, we will be coming back with an after-action report, which is an important piece of this, and so there's certainly opportunity for further feedback, and we look forward to that. You know, I'll just say this, certainly, this organization, from the council all the way through to every single employee, has really embraced the approach to be relentless about, around emergency preparedness. We've learned a lot of lessons, and I think, you know, fortunately, we were able to put some of what we learned into action. I'll just say, for me, there's three important things that this boiled down to. We will never rely on another agency for a communication plan. We will always have our own communication plan. We will never rely on another agency for ground-truthing what's going on in our city. We will always be out there figuring it out one way or another, and we will never rely on another agency for maps. That's been a problem for us, and we never will. And so, just want to thank you to the staff, certainly thank you to the mayor and council for all of your support. This is a team effort, and by, through your input and the community's input, makes us better. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And I think those are all excellent points. I appreciate how you got through the entire thing without ever mentioning the word flood, since I suspect that was on the minds of many of us. I mentioned Matt's first name, but it just dawned on me, I didn't mention Matt's last name, who worked so hard with Public Works. It was Matt Lush, who did a great job with his team in providing some of those technical tools that helped us stay on top of real-time information. So thanks to Matt and his team. Okay, any other comments before we move forward to the vote on Councilmember Camus's motion? All right, we have no public comment, let's vote. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. And I encourage, before we adjourn, if anyone wants to hang around for the Rules Committee, you're welcome to do so. It's a great show. Otherwise, we won't be offended if you need to leave. We'll adjourn that meeting.